Welcome.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Township of West Orange Planning Board Meeting July tenth, twenty twenty four. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and no new matters will start after ten thirty P M. May I ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The next Planning Board Special Meeting will be held July thirtieth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty P M. in person. The next Planning Board Regular Meeting will be held August seventh, twenty twenty four, at seven thirty P M. via Zoom. Roll call, please, Yamalat.
Mister Albert?
Here.
Mister Cardoza?
Present.
Mister Guarino?
Present.
Miss Caffrey?
Here.
Mrs. Morado?
Present.
Mister Wilks? Council President Rutherford?
Here.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Chairman Baglo?
Here. Thank you.
For the record, Mister Morgan and Mister Cryer won't be joining us tonight.
Okay, and Mister Wilks is here?
He's not here. Mister Wilk is not here yet.
He'll be here soon. Okay.
Mister, Mister Chairman, before we begin, in the Zoom audience, there is an individual with their hand raised, which is unusual at this time, and it's listed as Owner John F. Is that someone that I should be promoting to panelist?
Ah, I have, I don't know.
Mister F.
Does anybody know John F?
Mister Malanga raised his hand. I think it might be related to Mister Malanga. Should I bring Mister Malanga in and you can question him about that?
Not yet. Uh, okay. Miss McGovern? Can't hear you.
Sorry about that. What are you asking?
Mister, somebody related to Mister Malanga is raising their hand, and the question was, should we bring them in now or wait till we get to that part of the meeting?
You know what? I'm gonna suggest that you say if it's about a specific matter on the agenda, we'll get to it when we get to it, or it, uh, I don't know. If it's not related to an agenda matter, then maybe they should be heard now. So if we could ask them to keep their hand raised if it's not related to something we're going to get to in the normal course, with the understanding it may be related to Wonder Group, and there is going to be a request for an adjournment that's going to be taken very soon. If that answers or addresses uh, some of the issue as to why they're raising their hand, let's just say if they put their hand down.
It may have because they lowered their hand.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Sorry for the interruption, Mister Chairman.
No, no problem. Thank you very much, Mister Fager. Let the record show that Mister Wilks joined us.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Sorry to be late.
That's okay. No problem. Um. First thing on the agenda is the Minutes and Resolutions, P B twenty four dash oh four Montclair Golf Club, the draft resolution uh, with conditions. Uh, are there any questions about the draft resolution with conditions? Seeing none, I make a motion that we approve P B twenty four dash oh four Montclair Golf Club with conditions. Do I have a second?
Don't move, Mister Chairman.
Uh, somebody spoke before you. Who spoke first? Mister Cardoza? Mister Cardoza seconds the motion. On the motion, Yamalat?
Mister, uh, sorry, hold on. Mrs. Morado?
Yes.
Mister Cardoza?
Yes.
Miss Caffrey?
Yes.
Council President Rutherford, or no, sorry, Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mister Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Baglo?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, Miss McGovern, will you swear on the Township Professionals, please?
Yes, uh, Mister Jordan and Mister Hazel, if you'd please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? The whole truth, nothing but the truth with respect to these meet, with respect to your testimony this evening.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna go a little bit out of order here. Uh, P B twenty four dash oh six four ten Main Street Holdings LLC Block one one three Lot two sixty two, two sixty four, and three oh eight four ten Main Street. The applicant is requested to be adjourned to the August seventh, twenty twenty four Planning Board Meeting. They'll, no noon, uh, no new notice will be required. Then we have P B twenty four dash oh two, the Wonder Group, for the Wonder Group, Mister Fant.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. We submitted a request for adjournment as well.
Okay. Unless somebody on the board has a question, um, we will adjourn the P B twenty four dash oh two Wonder Group, Block one fifty two thousand oh one, Lot fourteen forty five dot oh one, Zone B two, four eighty one Eagle Rock Avenue, to the August seventh Planning Board Regular Meeting.
Without any further notice, right?
Without any further notice to be required. Thank you, Miss McGovern, and that takes care of that. And now we have the Ordinance Review twenty eight fifty two dash twenty four, second revised ordinance governing cannabis businesses fifty two, one, two, four, ordinance twenty eight fifty two dash twenty four, master plan consistency review. Mister Hazel?
Yes. Good morning, good evening, sorry again. Uh, you have before you my review of, uh, the ordinances being proposed that has been forwarded by the governing body for review by the Planning Board for consistency with the master plan. As I indicated in my, my review memo, uh, I find this ordinance to be consistent with the most recent, uh, uh, the most recent adoption of the master plan, which was the twenty nineteen, uh, master plan. I find it to be consistent. The ordinance essentially is, uh, modifying Chapter twenty five, uh, Section twenty four point two, uh, subsections two, uh, oh, four, which essentially deals with the, uh, the conditional use standards for permitting, uh, this use in the township. Uh, it specifically, this ordinance seeks to establish, uh, parking standards for cultivators and manufacturers of cannabis-related products, and it indicates that for employers of such businesses, for such businesses with ten or more employees, there shall be one parking space uh, per one thousand square feet grossed floor area used in the, in the operation. And as I indicated, there are several areas in the master plan that do speak to the, uh, uh, the, the cannabis, uh, the cannabis use, the various cannabis uses, uh, whether it's retail, uh, manufacturing, et cetera. And this ordinance does conform and comport with the the vision, if you will, of the master plan for these uses in the township. Um, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to.
No, ladies and gentlemen, the board, the, the reason that we, we've requested this from the Town Council was we've had a number of licensed cannabis entities that have the public coming in, and they would have a different parking requirement as opposed to a group that would be, uh, growing cannabis, which they don't have the public coming in, and they only have a limited number of employees that would be shift workers. So we would be encumbering, uh, these, uh, businesses with the same parking standard as a business that has people, the general public coming in on a regular basis. So the council has listened and has helped us and the, the business owners to have a more useful, uh, parking, um, ordinance. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Mister Hazel about this, uh, ordinance?
Mister Chairman, Council President Rutherford has his hand raised.
Council President Rutherford.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I just wanted to, uh, correct something. It's no more than ten employees, so ten employees or less. Uh, so this is for, you know, smaller cultivators and manufacturers. Um, thank you.
Thank you. I stand corrected.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Do any other members of the board have any questions for Mister Hazel on this ordinance? Seeing none, I recommend that we, uh, send this ordinance back up to the Town Council with a recommendation that it's adopted based on our review of the ordinance that is consistent with the master plan. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Don't move, Mister Chairman.
Uh, Mister Guarino, uh, moves the motion, and Mister Smoraldo seconds. On the motion, Yamalat?
Mister Albert?
Yes.
Mrs. Morado?
Yes.
Mister Wilks?
Yes.
Mister Cardoza?
Yes.
Miss Caffrey?
Yes.
Council President Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mister Guarino?
Yes.
Chairman Baglo?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. And Miss McGovern, will you send this back up to the council with our recommendation for adoption? Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is P B twenty four dash oh eight G B S LLC, T A, the Goddard School Block eighty three Lot one and five dot oh one, two eighty nine Mount Pleasant Avenue. The applicant, G B S J Properties LLC, proposes to demolish an existing three-story structure on the subject site, which was previously used as a radio station, and in its place, construct a new three-story building to be used as an annex to the existing childcare center on the site for the applicant. Okay, somebody say something.
Oh, would you like me to start, Mister Chairman?
Absolutely. Go right ahead, Mr. Hanley. Thank you.
Yes, Mister Chairman, ladies and gentlemen aboard, my name is Walter Hanley. I'm the attorney for the applicant, J B S J Properties, trading as the Goddard School. Um, this property in question is located two eighty nine Mount Pleasant Ave, um, formerly Block eighty three Lot one, and recently it was just pursuant, and I'm gonna get right to it, um, a consolid, a deed of consolidation was merged with, um, Lot five point oh one, the existing Goddard School, creating a new Lot five point oh two. Um, and that deed was dated May thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty four, and that was pursuant to and consistent with the resolution of November twenty third. Um, the real property is located in a B two zone. The relief sought this evening is preliminary and final site plan with several bulk variances. Um, as the chairman, um, mentioned a moment ago, the applicant is proposing to expand the existing childcare center on Lot five one, um, by now demolishing the existing building on the adjacent property, Lot one, and constructing a new building on the existing foundation. Um, as some members of the board are aware, this applicant was here before this board in November, on November first, and received approval for everything we're seeking this evening, but for the fact that a prior application, we were gonna rehab the existing building. So today, we're here before the board seeking relief, not to rehab the existing building and take down the towers, but to build, construct a new property. Um, this evening, we have with us testifying, uh, is one of the owners, Steve Harrison, as well as both the engineer and architect Jerry Giuzzero and Cheryl Schweiker. Um, regarding traffic, um, I'm gonna say a month or so ago, I had conversations with, um, Board Attorney, you know, pursuant to a request to have a waiver for a traffic. Um, the consensus was, you know, because there's no changes whatsoever to the parking, the flow, to submit the report, as well as provide the board a transcript of the prior testimony from Matt Steckler on November first, which was part of the application. Um, so with that being said, um, unless anyone has any questions as to exactly why we're here, which will be explained right now by Mister Harrison. I'd like to have, um, Mister Harrison, um, a member of G B S J testify.
Go right ahead.
Do you want to hear me?
You have to be sworn in, sir.
Mister Harrison, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do?
I do. And, and actually, uh, Miss, Miss McGovern, uh, my wife is actually sitting next to me too. Um, she's the other member. I don't know if, um,
Uh, are you? I'm on the high stool and he's on the low chair. Sorry. Mister Hanley, is, um, Mrs. Harrison going to give testimony?
I don't believe so.
No, no.
It's moral support.
That's fine.
Okay. It's okay.
Don't try to help him, though. I will.
Um.
Steve, could you explain who you are and what you're doing?
I'm sorry, Walter, did you say explain who I am?
Yeah, introduce yourself to the board.
Yes, sure. Um, so, so my name is Steve Harrison. My wife and I, uh, run the Goddard School in West Orange. We are the owners and the operators. We are also the owner, operator of the Livingston School, which is about five miles away as well. Um, and we were in front of the Planning Board, as Walter mentioned, um, several months back in November, um, for this project, um, eh, that, that we had received approval on from, from the Planning Board. Um, the reason, quite honestly, that we're here tonight, um, is because, you know, if the path of least resistance probably would have been to continue on with those approvals from the Planning Board. But as we started to peel the onion back after those approvals and dug into the building a little bit deeper, what we started to find was, um, easier is not always the right way. And, and as we started to dig in with the actual bid plans and have the subcontractors into the building, I found that we were doing a lot of things or would have to do a lot of things that weren't necessarily the best way to do them. Um, and that was really based on what we had to work with, um, within the building that, um, I think was built in the nineteen fifties. Um, so, so really what it came down to for us was really three things. Um, you know, there's a certain amount of cost that we had already spent, um, on the process with the soft costs with our architects, um, with our attorneys, et cetera. Um, but what, what we found is, is, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, from a safety and use standpoint, and then ultimately from a cost standpoint, it just proved to be more, uh, the, the right way forward, um, to demo, demo the building or hope to demo the building and build a new building that would be exactly the same square footage, um, would have the exact same amount of occupancy. None of those things are changing at all. But what it would, what allow us to do is it would allow us to do things such as remove, um, support beams that would be in the middle of the classrooms, which would cause potentially an issue or hiding spaces for children. Um, it would allow us to do things such as increase the window size on the first floor, creating more natural daylight for our children that were gonna be in that classroom down there. Uh, that's really on the safety and use side. Excuse me, it also allowed us on the first level to have a little bit of higher ceilings, um, than a seven, I believe it was a seven and a half foot ceiling that was, um, originally proposed there. So, um, you know, creating a safer environment for our kids aesthetically, um, as I said, the square footage isn't changing. However, aesthetically, the outside of the building will be more in line with our existing building, um, the main building, the main school, um, which we also believe not only will create a better look and feel for the school, but it'll create a better look and feel for the entire town on that, on that busy intersection there. Um, the two buildings will flow, kind of match together, and, and it'll create kind of synergy between the two. Um, and then certainly from a cost perspective, you know, um, going back to the well and starting this process over, um, was not something that we took lightly. However, um, in trying to rehab a building of that age to eliminate certain things that, quite honestly, we didn't need to do, but we wanted to do, such as the support beams, would have been so cost prohibitive, um, that it was actually brought to our attention by several of the contractors building on the job that we would be better served, starting from the foundation and building back up again. Um, so that, in a nutshell, is why we are here again. Um, eh, eh, I feel like it's very, very important to share that we are doing nothing to increase the size, occupancy, need for parking, anything from what was already approved. It's just we wanna do a nicer, better-looking building.
Yes, and I think that was one of the questions that were raised in the memo of July third from, uh, Mister Hess. You know, why are we coming back, fellas? And I you think everybody wanted to hear why we're coming back, going through this process again.
That's again.
And the other thing right now, the only difference also is in, in November of twenty three, the applicant was the contract purchaser. We have subsequently closed, and you probably picked up on it earlier. He filed a deed of consolidation. I really don't have much more, um, for Mister Harrison right now. Um, if anyone has any questions.
Do any members of the board have any questions, uh, for Mister Harrison about what he just testified to? Please raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none. Mister Hazel, I'm sorry, Mayor McCartney.
Best wishes to you, Steve and Nicole.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney.
Are you part of the pre-K expansion program?
You know, we have actually had, um, two phone calls at this point to become a part of that. Um, the, the first phone call was to, we were told that we had missed the deadline for this upcoming year. The second phone call was to schedule a time to let them know that we do, in fact, have, um, uh, interest in be, in be, in becoming a part of that. Um, we also, in our Livingston location, just met last month with, um, what was?
Assemblywoman.
Assemblywoman Gill, Gill. Um, and that was one of our topics of discussion with her, um, was how we best can support, um, and all of us working together to, to reach that ultimate goal, which is childcare for everyone, right? And, and, um, and, uh, so I think that was a very constructive conversation. But to answer your question, yes, we, we are interested in, in participating in that, and, um, will continue to move that conversation forward.
Uh, then I wanted to make a suggestion, because I've been a licensed facility for twenty six years, and yet the Board of Education has overlay, uh, uh, regulations on top of what we already have. So we have already hired an architect to do the same, and if you're already in that process, it might be a good idea to check with the Board of Ed, uh, and what the state is requiring, uh, for the new expansion program with the Board of Ed. And my other question was, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Go on. No, 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 I'm sorry. Just with regards to that, that actually is a great, uh, call out, and it is already something that we have. I don't know if Cheryl's going to speak to that or not, but there are that, I, I can tell you that was part of our new design. Um, I don't know if it fits all the requirements, but yes.
It's very closely. Um, and the other question, I knew the location, just to throw that in. Um, the other question was, is there access on Mount Pleasant Avenue, or do you still have to come up prospect and come around the back?
Uh, you have to come up prospect, and you're still going to be making the right onto, I'm drawing a blank right now. Marcela, right? Yes, Marcela. Yeah, so, so as far as traffic flow, there'll be no, no new, uh, egress or it's, it's the same traffic pattern.
Right, good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do any other members of the board have any questions for Mister Harrison on his testimony? Please raise your hand. Seeing none. Mister Hazel, do you have any questions, sir?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Mister Jordan, do you have any questions, sir?
Questions, thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mister Harrison on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yeah, yes, we do, Mister Chairman.
Go right ahead.
Uh, Mister Littonoff, uh, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Philip Litwinoff. I live at eleven Linden Avenue here in West Orange. It was just less than a quarter of a mile away from the Goddard School. Um, I have two questions. One, as being both a resident of West Orange for many years and a shareholder of American Tower Group. I understand that the, the radio towers, cell towers that are on that building that you want to demolish and redo belong to, or at least, or leased by American Tower Corp. I would like to hear from you as to how you're gonna satisfy that responsibility. Second question, so you can have them both together, is when the approval was given for you to build the, uh, the schools, uh, it used to be the Mount Fuji Restaurant, and then the location where the school actually is. One of the restrictions was that if you're heading eastbound on Mount Pleasant Avenue, you were not permitted to have, to make left-hand turns into the parking lot. And there is, there are traffic signs that, that's, that require that. As a resident in the local area, that is constantly violated, and traffic backs up onto Prospect Avenue all the time. I'd like to know how you're gonna handle that. Excuse me? I'd like to know how you're gonna handle that traffic problem.
Hello, can we? Yes, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, I, I, I heard what you were saying on the first question, but I, I don't really know where the question was as, as it relates to the towers. What, when you say we were taking the towers down, what, what were you looking, asking about? What we were satisfying?
Well, no, no, in terms of the towers, my understanding is American Tower Corporation owns those towers. If you destroy the building, what happens to those towers?
That, okay, so that, that's not, uh, I, I don't know where that information is from, but the towers were actually owned by Family Radio. Family Radio is who we purchased the building from, and Family Radio leased out the tower space to other radio stations, primarily as backups, um, on AM. Uh, before we were allowed to close on the property, all of those lease agreements had to be terminated. They needed twelve months approximately to do. Um, all of those, um, those lease agreements were canceled, and those towers are no longer in service.
Okay. And as for the traffic?
As for the traffic, you know, I, I, I can, eh, eh, as far as what we do, um, I will tell you this. We work with, um, we work very close with, um, the Police Department in town. Um, we have, I will tell you that when we first opened, there may have been a few issues where we had heard about that. Um, we've worked with them to the point where, um, very, very often, um, as a matter of fact, yesterday, when I was driving by around four thirty, I noticed that he was there. Very, very often, you will see a police officer parked on our bottom level. Um, we, we allow that, we encourage that. Um, and so there's a presence there, um, quite often. Um, so that's one of the ways. Another way that we do that, um, is we do, we do, uh, weekly and monthly newsletters that go out to all of our families, because while most of our families have been with us for a long time, we do, obviously, through, through aging out and through new families coming into town, have new people that come in, and that is, that is a consistent, um, that is a consistent message that we share with our families to make sure that they're adhering to all of the, the in and out, uh, traffic signs as it relates to coming in and out of our schools. Um, I will also tell you that the overwhelming majority, overwhelming majority of our families come into our, our complex via Marcela. Um, there's, there's, um, I would, eh, eh, and I can't quant, I can't accurately quantify this, but if I had to tell you how many of them were making the right turnout onto, um, Route ten, it's, it's probably under twenty percent of our families that pick up and drop off. Of overwhelmingly, it's in and out of, um, Marcella, Marcela. And quite honestly, I think the reason that is, is because Marcela is that top-level parking, which is the closest to the entrance points of our, of our school. And so, you know, rather than going down the hill, I feel like most people are just used to going in and out, um, of that back entrance.
I, I hear you saying, Mister Harrison, I'm not disputing you. However, I will tell you, I have been cursed out several times at that, in that area when I've tried to make a point. So I think you need to do something additional, if I may.
Hey, any other questions? Hey, any other questions? Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Harrison on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
None raised at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, we're going to close that portion of the meeting. Mr. Hanley, you're up.
Yes, I'd like to bring in Jerry Gisero. You there, Jer? There you are.
I'm here.
Mr. Gisario.
Would you like to swear him in?
Yes, Mr. Gisario, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Gisario, I believe you already provided the plans, both hard copy and digital to the board, but prior to going through them, briefly, could you give a synopsis to the members of the board of the project?
Well, first you have to qualify him as an expert, just very quickly.
Could you went near him, please?
Mr. Gisero, could you give the board your qualifications?
Sure. My full name is Gerard, G E R A R D. Last name Gisario, G E S A R I O. I am a nineteen eighty-eight graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-four. License is and has always been in good standing. I provided testimony through over sixty boards throughout the state and I have provided testimony on several occasions before this board.
Hey, so, listen, any members of the board have any questions from Gisario? We will accept you as a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jer.
Sure. As Council Handley mentioned, this is an amendment to our approval of November twenty twenty-three for all the reasons that Mr. Harrison had stated. But I'll briefly go through testimony, much if it's the same as from the prior application for the record. So I do have a couple of exhibits to share.
Have these exhibits been presented to the board in the application pack?
No, these are exhibits.
We're going to have to label them as you, we'll have to label them as you present them, sir.
Understood.
Thank you.
I'll share my screen. Okay, this first exhibit, we're going to do A one. Okay, one is an aerial exhibit courtesy of Google Maps. It has a date of ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. And it's simply titled aerial exhibit, drawing number E one hundred. So as you can see, the overall property is highlighted in yellow. And the primary frontage is on Prospect Avenue to the west and Mount Pleasant Avenue to the south, but as discussed, it also has frontage on both sides of Marcela that wraps around to the north and to the east. As Council mentioned, at the time we submitted the application, there were two lots, Lot five oh one, which is the larger lot and Lot one, both in Block eighty-three. Lot one is a smaller lot. They've subsequently been consolidated. And the overall lot is now new lot five point zero two with the total area of one point three four acres. As you can see, the existing Goddard School sits on the the larger of the two lots or formerly two lots in the northern half with parking to the south and the lower level here in the, call it the southwest corner is also parking. And there's the ramp up and down that connects the two lots, about ten to twelve feet of gray change between the two levels. The adjacent uses are mixed. We have residential lots and an office building along Marcela and Prospect. To the south across Mount Pleasant is Arden Courts. And diagonally across is the Essex County Country Club. To the west of our site is an electrical substation, well, across the street from Marcela. As was discussed, the Lot one, former Lot one, was the radio station, three-story building. And that building will be demolished under the amended application. The radio, as Mr. Harrison said, the radio antenna that was part of that building will also be demolished. And just, I think was stated in the prior application, there are towers on the larger lot to the west of the school. Those towers are remaining, so it's only the one with the that exists with the radio station building that is getting is not in use and is getting removed.
Two towers.
The towers.
Two.
The two, two towers on adjacent to the school, to the west of the school, those are staying.
One tower is adjacent to two towers which are on the building we're demoing are both coming down.
All right, so the towers on Lot one, formerly Lot one, are coming down. The towers that are on what formerly Lot five oh one is staying. Just sort of clear, yes. We'll go right to the proposed condition, so this will be get to my exhibit, this will be exhibit A two. A two is entitled Site Exhibit, drawing E two hundred. It has a date of July ten, twenty twenty-four. And this exhibit is basically a colored version of the combination of the landscape plan and the site plan with their zone data and parking table and plant schedule on it. Those are just colored for presentation. But the information is the same as what the zoning table, plant and parking is the same as what was submitted. This will be exhibit A two. As was, as Mr. Hanley and Mr. Harrison stated, the prior proposal to rehab the building has been scrapped and a new building is going in its place. Our architect will provide detail on the building and the look of the building and what's inside. As was also mentioned, we're not changing any of the traffic patterns, the driveway off make sure I get it right, off Prospect and the driveway off Marcela are staying exactly as they were previously approved. So no change in, in traffic flow as far as entering and exiting the site. No changes to the parking lot are proposed. We were approved at forty-five vehicles. That's not changing. I do want to clarify one thing, as Mr. Harrison stated, the intent is to provide the same square footage as was approved in November. Our plans did have a discrepancy. I think this submission had a sixty-square foot difference from the prior plan. As Mr. Harrison stated, it is the intent to match that, so the amended plans will be corrected to have the same exact square footage that was previously approved. Let's see, so the same variance would apply. I think the prior application required seventy parking spaces, of which forty-five are provided. That variance was granted in November, originally, and was granted in November twenty twenty-three. It'll stay the same. It'll be the same square footage, same seventy spaces required, and we're still providing forty-five. The other relief variances that this application needed, aside from the parking, there was variance relief for front yard setback where twelve and a half feet is provided and thirty feet is required. This is an existing condition with the radio station building and that will remain and be unchanged with the new building. Variance relief for a side front yard setback is required where three feet is provided and twenty-five feet is required. This is also an existing condition of the radio station building that's going to remain under the current proposal. And there was variance relief for maximum lot coverage where sixty-seven percent is provided and sixty percent is allowed. That variance was also granted in November of twenty twenty-three, so no new variances are being requested with the amended application. The utilities, the building, one of the things that is being done, although the building is coming down, they are going to reuse the existing footings. So no new utilities are going to be provided except for a, a new fire service line. The new building will need to be sprinkled since it's a daycare use, so we're going to be adding a a new fire service line tapping off the main and Marcela Avenue. Landscaping, if you're familiar with the site, it's fairly unkept in its current condition. We'll be clearing the area all around the building and providing new landscaping. There'll be some walkways, some lawn area and formal landscaping provided around the site, so it'll definitely be an improvement to the, the current look of the, the site. There's no new lighting proposed. All the existing lights in the parking lot of the school will remain, and that does cover the walkways on what was Lot one where the annex is going. The only new lights would be the required security lighting at the doorways on the, the new building. We are providing, as was previously approved, approved, the crosswalk and a walkway with signage on both sides of this walkway warning motorists of pedestrian crossing that provides the, the connection between the, the two buildings. As far as drainage, there's really no new drainage going in. The impervious that's being added is about five hundred square feet, which is de minimis and talking about stormwater. Stormwater will get improved by regrading and landscaping around the site will provide positive flow to the existing inlets. The quality of the runoff gets improved and when we clear the site and put in the, a formal landscaping system. So overall, I think drainage from this, this small lot, it'll be a benefit despite adding about five hundred square feet. And that's, that's really it. So there really, there is no change to the site plan from the prior approval is really the summary here. And that's all I have.
All right. Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions on his testimony?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'm just wondering if his gentleman will be the right person to ask, but since now the building is going to be pouring down, will there be any specifications for environmental protection to monitor the demolition of the building and what testing or monitoring will be done to monitor that there will be no contaminants exposed to the residents in the area? As we do know, right behind this area is Ziegler Ridge condominium development. So those are concerns that I have that we're taking down a building that is seventy-plus year old. And there may be issues that with the demolition contaminants, if present, will be, you know, exposed to the environment and what proportions will be taken to, let me fill it to, to monitor that? And has there been testing on the building by certification of environmental protection to see if the building is clean or has any contaminants available?
My guess is, I'm probably not the right person to ask. Mr. Harrison might have information on what's been done already and what's being done. I would defer that response to, to Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Mayor McCartney.
Yeah, I I can speak just initially to that, so to Sorry, my internet, hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead now.
Oh, you can. Sorry about that. We've, we've already started discussions with that with our contractor. We're using a company for environmental purposes by the name of Sessi. So they're going to come in and do the environmental testing before we do anything. And then as far as the interior of the building itself, our contractor is bringing in a company. I'm sorry, I don't have the name of the company, but they're going to go through and they will, they will test to ensure before they do any type of demolition that the building is in fact clean, that there's no asbestos, there's no all the things that they test for. And, and that's largely due to your point to, to the age of the building. So we'll know that well before we even start the demolition.
Okay, Ken, and thank you, Steve. I appreciate that, sir. But, and the question is that if something is found or when there is, will there be a plan to protect the surrounding neighborhoods and environment for any exposure to if any contaminants are found? Will that be another part of our, you know, approving the, the go-ahead with this project?
Well, this is not certainly my area of expertise, but it is my understanding that we would have to have all of that mitigated before we could in fact do the, the deconstruction of the building. So if there was to be anything found, we wouldn't be able to afford with that demolition permit.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. I appreciate your response, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Until that was all mediated.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney. Council President Rutherford.
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Council President, Mr. Alper.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alper, Mr. Wilks.
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Mrs. Maraldo.
Yeah, just to follow up on the, on the proposal of the sprinkler system, I just want to make sure for the record or condition that the access is free on the exterior hookups for the, the wide connections and things of that nature. So if necessary, I don't know where it's going to be with the parking lot in relation to parking, if we need ballards or anything to help protect, that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Maraldo. Mr. Codoza.
No questions just yet, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Codoza, Ms. Caffrey.
No questions at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Caffrey. Mr. Hazel.
No questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. Mr. Jordan.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Do any members of the public have any questions for the testimony just provided? Do any members of the public have any questions for the testimony just provided? Please raise your hand and be identified.
There are no hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll close this portion of the application. Mr. Hanley, you're up.
Yes, would like to swear in Cheryl Schweiker, licensed architect.
Good evening, Miss Cheryl, is she here? Ms. Schweiker, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you.
Cheryl, could you please give the board your qualifications?
Sure. So I am a two thousand and one graduate of NJIT with a bachelor's of architecture. I am currently licensed in the state of New Jersey since two thousand seven seventeen. My license is active and in good standing. I've never testified in front of this board, but I've testified in dozens of board in the state of New Jersey, such as Jersey City, Morristown, Hackensack.
Thank you. Question, did you draw the plans for this application?
Yes.
Okay, unless any members of the board have any questions, we recognize you as licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you.
I'm a little confused. Didn't you testify at the first hearing before the planning?
No, Matthew Jarmel, our firm principal testified at the last.
Somehow your name snuck into the resolution.
Yeah, so I was part of the project and, and prepared the plans along with my colleague, Matthew Jarmel. So he's out of the country this evening. So since I'm well versed in the project, I'm testifying tonight.
Okay, thank you. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Let me share my screen.
Yeah. Does the board have these, these plans?
Yes, these are the plans that were submitted with the application, no changes.
Okay.
So I'd like to start with the floor plan. As we, we previously discussed and was explained in other testimony, the footprint of the building hasn't changed from the previous application.
Could you just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you just give the date, the last revised date on the plans that we have on the screen just to make sure?
Sure, let me just check that here.
Let's see.
So, yes, June twenty-sixth.
Twenty twenty-four, right?
Twenty twenty-four. Okay, thank you. Okay. So, yeah, so as we were stating, the, the building footprint remains unchanged from, changed from the previous application. Now that we are looking to demolish the existing building, we took that as an opportunity to rearrange some of the interior layouts to better fit the use for the daycare space and make it a little more user-friendly for the children. We haven't changed the number of occupants. We haven't changed the number of classrooms. We still have one classroom per floor. We haven't changed the number of occupants. We haven't changed the number of classrooms. We still have one classroom per fo- floor. Um, children over the age of two and a half, so our preschool children, that has not changed. I can walk you through the plans. Upon entering the building at grade, uh, across the parking lot, we'll enter into secure vestibule. Uh, you'll have access to a single classroom on the ground floor. We have an elevator and, uh, two stair towers that serve all the floors. There, uh, so each classroom will have access to two means of egress from each floor. There's associated bathrooms for the children and an office and some other mechanical spaces on the ground floor. Moving up to the first floor, again, we have another classroom, associated bathrooms, um, teacher's toilet and some other mechanical, um, spaces. And then at the top floor, our last classroom, associated bathrooms, a staff area. We'll also have access to the roof where the mechanical equipment will be housed, um. Uh, new roof, obviously new building, um, parapets. Showed here on the roof. So you can see our roof access here. I'll move to the building elevations. So as previously testified, we wanted to take this opportunity as well, having a new building, incorporating materials on the new build that match the existing building, which is the brick, uh, and also the, uh, cementitious hardy siding on the building that will also match the existing building. We feel this is a little more attractive than, uh, the previous application where we would have a lot of changes to the existing facade with the existing brick, the poor condition it was in and trying to repair it, um, close up openings, have new openings. Um, would not be as attractive than having this new build with all new materials, uh, uh, on the building. So you can see here, the main elevation, the west elevation will have some signage indicating this is the, the annex to the existing school, um, with an entrance canopy and some associated signage on the building that will be visible uh, from those traveling on Mount Pleasant. Some new, new windows. We were able to add some additional windows as was previously noted, uh, to give us more light in those classrooms. Um, based on the, the new build with the new structure, it, it allowed us to, to make that more attractive to the end user. The building will be equipped with a sprinkler system as was previously noted. We will work with the town to make sure any access or connections, fire department connections are in an adequate location and protected for the use. The building will have a fire alarm system, um, uh, s- some sorts of the new utilities as, as Jerry mentioned earlier, existing storm, we are looking to do a new electric service. The, uh, service that was there previously for the radio use was, um, a, a higher voltage that didn't seem appropriate for this application as well. So the, the new building will, will have appropriate, uh, electrical services, um, more upgraded. Not as antiquated as what was in there before too. So that's another positive here for the, for the new build. Um, ha- having a, a better electrical system in the building. Um. I don't believe I have anything else as it relates to.
Cheryl, is the building, um, shall be, uh, shall, shall the buil- the building have an elevator?
Yes, it will have an elevator that serves all three floors.
And coming in the front door, um, what's security? Best of you, wh- what's going to be provided? I'm saying this because these were questions at the last.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Um, yes, you, you'll enter into this, uh, uh, main entry door into the secure vestibule here. So if a visitor or parents coming in, this second door here will have access control on it. So they will ne- neither need to be, uh, buzzed in or have a key fob to use that door and open it. Um, so no one can just walk into the school, so it is secure and safe. Uh, the stair, I, I know. Tor missing from here, there will be a tor located here. We'll have that on our, our, um, compliance plans. So there will be a door here, but you don't have access to the stairs or the elevator from, uh, this vestibule. So it is secure. No one can just walk in and slip up a stair or enter the elevator. It's all secure.
And correct me if I'm wrong, all of this also has to be approved by the state?
Correct. So the license, the facility has to be licensed by the state of New Jersey. Um, so they will come in after the construction and inspect, they'll actually measure the rooms to make sure it's the proper square footages for the number of children that are using the classrooms and that all the egress is acceptable. So, so yes, it will be inspected before it can be used to, uh, for, for the children.
Anything else, Mr. Hanley?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if there were any other conditions on the last resolution, but I think they, they were the questions that were raised.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think I have anything further.
Thank you. Any questions, Vice Chairman Guerino?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney.
Well, Ms. Schweiker, I was wondering if you had any green features incorporated into the building?
Sure, so, right.
Light roof, maybe?
Right, so it will be a white roof, so it'll be a cool roof. The HVAC system will be a high efficiency system. Um, the codes these days are, uh, de- demanding more and more of those energy efficient systems. So we'll be compliant with that, um, plumbing, low flow plumbing fixtures, uh, windows will be double glazed, low e gla- glass. Um, so yes, we will, we will have items in the building that, uh, promote energy efficiency.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Rutherford.
Uh, no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Rutherford. Mr. Alper.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alper, Mr. Wilks.
Um, no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilks. Mrs. Meraldo.
Yeah, so I got a couple of questions regarding the interiors. Uh, the elevators, is that, uh, is that a single sided entry? There's not double sided, correct?
It's single sided. That's correct.
Okay, is it wide enough to hold, uh, stretchers or things of that nature if there's an urgent emergency medical?
So it is a twenty-five-hundred pound elevator. I believe it does fit a stretcher. We will double check that with our specifications, but we're, we're meeting the twenty-five-hundred pound requirement.
Good. Um, I, I see with the, the, you have the staircase going up. You said you have a third floor access to the roof. How is that access? Is that a staircase or a hatch?
No, there's a roof ladder and a hatch shown here within, um, this, the stock lounge. We're gonna, I put that in a, in a closet, um, so it's not sitting out in the room, but there will be access there. The size of the roof hatch, we all the building codes for access and safety.
So, well, I'm gonna disagree with you on that one. Um, that access is inside a room, inside a closet that they have to climb up to the roof, correct?
It's inside this room that they have to, it's a, a wall ladder.
Yeah, so they have to go inside a room, they have to find it. So would it be an issue to put a third, another set of stairs, continue up that staircase up to the roof and have a bulkhead door?
Um, I believe that would change the height of the building. I don't know if that would ex- extend us above the allowed height here. Um, I have not looked into that.
So that would require you go to the planning board and get a variance, correct?
Uh, possibly. I, again, we have not explored. Yeah, possibly, yes.
So, so the question I have is because, um, that's a big, big pet peeve of mine, access holes just do not work. They're not access holes. They're more, they're more manipulative. You can't get up there with tools and equipment for regular maintenance, can't get up there for emergency. So I'm, I'm a proponent of, of having a staircase go, well, we have to make it easy for everybody, um, including if there's emergencies up there. Somebody gets hurt up there, you can't get them down.
Understood.
So that, that's, that's a concern and a question I have, and I'd like to see that, uh, somehow incorporated into, into the program or to the building. Um, the other thing I have is, um, is there areas there where, where this board has been proactive with life safety? Um, and the fact of like, um, AEDs, is there a room or areas we could, we could put an AED on each floor? Especially since we're talking children getting, uh, uh, AED put on every floor somewhere, uh, it's a access point, easy access point.
Sure, I know there, there is room for that and we can discuss with the owner on, on providing that and having those life safety items available.
Okay, and all the other items that you mentioned before, they're all gonna be up to NFA and whatever, uh, UCC codes and everything else, correct?
Yes, sprinkler, fire alarm, yes, all of that.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Meraldo, Mr. Codoza.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, Ms. Schweiker, just a few things I'd like to clarify. Um, I apologize if I missed this. There's been a lot of discussion about this maintaining the same, um, footprint or square footage. So as far as height and I guess the, the elevation, the foundation, those are, that's starting at the same place?
Correct. So the, the intention is at part of the ground floor or basement because it's partially below grade, uh, on the Mount Pleasant side, which you can see here by these dark lines on this plan. We intend to maintain a portion of the existing foundation because it is below grade. Uh, we don't want to start having to worry about pulling that out and rebuilding it. It's sufficient. Our engineers have looked at it and it's sufficient to support the construction above it. Um, so we are looking to keep that. So that's why we're maintaining that existing footprint.
Okay, so then the, the, um, lands, you know, I'm trying to figure out the best way to say this, um. The landscape around that, the, the ground level is pretty much the same as the original. Uh, I mean, if you're keeping a portion of the foundation.
So if you, i- if you look at the existing building, I know this portion of this side of the building, if you can see my cursor. Um, th- that's all heavily, um, overgrown, right? That's all gonna be cleared out, um, and the building is actually at grade on this side here, which is why we have our new entrance on this side. Um, so as Jerry, Mr. Giesserio testified earlier, all the landscaping around the building will be cleaned up. Um, so this does not affect that because we're keeping from the existing floor slab down. Nothing above the lowest floor slab, floor slab up will be removed.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, and this is neither here nor there, I'm just, yeah, uh, just clarification. So the, the ground, like the grass around that, are you leveling that to maintain? Or does it really, you know, you, no, the answer was it's below grade, right? So I'm answering my own question.
Okay, portions of it are. So we're doing minimal grading around the building and Mr. Giesserio can provide some further clarification on the extent of grading he's doing around the building, but we are not modifying it to a, a large extent that you may, yeah.
Can you go back to the exterior and show which are the new windows?
Sure, so everything is new. So everything that you see here is new. Um, like I said, we're only keeping what is the foundation below grade. So everything here, all the brick and sliding is new.
Okay, I guess I meant additional windows beyond what?
So, um, yeah, I apologize. I don't have the previous exhibit from the last submission, um, handy. But we did align up the windows and add more on these two sides of the building where before they were kind of placed all over be- because of the existing structure. Um, so we do have additional windows more on this side, um, and down on the lower level on this side, um. So down, down on here as well.
So definitely, you know, overall more light coming in, especially in that basement level. I know that was one of my concerns last time around.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right. Uh, I do like that there, there's of course no beams obstructing the, the path in the, uh, basement level anymore. That's, that's great. That's, that'll be good for safety as well as just daily functioning. Um, trying to remember if I had any other questions. No, I believe that's it. Thank you, Ms. Schweiker.
Thank you, Mr. Codoza. Ms. Caffr, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caffr. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions?
I do not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. Mr. Jordan, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Do any members of the public have any questions about this testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
There are no hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll close this portion immediately. Uh, well, I'm sorry, I have one question. So let's go back to, uh, Mr. Smiraldo. So, Mr. Smiraldo, you said for safety, you want a different type of, uh, access. So we should, let's, let's visit that and see what we can do to make that better, okay?
So, Mr. Kevin, my, my point is if we could pull up that picture with stairway, that's, that's a dead space as it is. There's nothing gonna be in that hallway, so why not add another set of, uh, risers going up to the roof? Um, it just makes it overall, when you're talking, you have HVAC machinery up there, you have equipment, people are gonna be working with tools, things in that nature. Um, I'm also looking at emergency access for, for, um, personnel to get up there, uh, carrying their equipment, which is a lot heavier than a lot of, you know, uh, of the, the average normal person will carry up any set of staircase. So to climb up a whatever, I don't even know, what is, what is the dimension of the, uh, the scuttle?
Uh, I don't have it offhand. I think the op- the opening, uh, I think is three and a half, forty-two by forty-two is the minimum you need, right?
Right. Uh, and so forty-two by forty-two, you gotta, you get somebody climbing up there with, with their work, everyday work tools, whatever that may be to work on a, uh, on a, on a air conditioning unit, whatever else, the equipment's up there. And then you talk it to emergency services, some, somebody climbing up there with their, all their equipment and a tank and other equipment. That's just not an easy climb to get up straight up to the stairs. And I, and what's the overall height of the floor?
Um, so the overall height of the, the building or floor?
From, from, from the floor to the, the, the base of the stair, uh, that, that, um, ladder to the roof. What's a ten feet?
The finished floor elevation is twenty-three, top of roof is thirty-four. So it looks like it's about nine and a half feet.
It's, it's a height, it goes straight up vertical with that.
I think, I think the concern is, is that if we took, so this right here is the stair tower, one of the stair towers. That if we extended it up with a bulkhead up here, we're exceeding the overall height by more than, allowed height might more than ten percent. Um, which, which does create, create, uh, you know, another issue.
Can I, can I also speak to that too, just from a, from a light distancing standpoint? Um, we, we have, um, I, I'm sorry, is that okay?
Yeah, go right ahead, sir.
Okay, um, I, I, I certainly understand, um, and I, I've been thinking through, um, that point as somebody that is in charge of changing the air filters, um, on the four air handlers of my schools and getting those air filters up there, um, I certainly understand, um, how much of, uh, how cumbersome that can be. Um, so, so I do understand from that point of view, if there was anything as far as an emergency um, or just everyday work that needs to be done up there. That being said, um, one of the things that, that we would have to look into, but a concern of mine would be even when you're dealing with children having stairs, additional stairs, especially stairs that are kind of leading to nowhere. Um, it, it, it can provide, it, it can create a bit of an issue, um, potentially. Um, and that would be something that we would have to look at with state licensing. Um, I'm thinking about other schools. Goddard, I think, has about sixty locations in the state of New Jersey, um, alone. I think there are six hundred and fifty nationwide, but in New Jersey, the ones that I know, I can't think of any of the two-story, um, Goddard schools that, that would have, uh, a full stair going to the roof. And again, I don't know if that's just based on the way the chips fell or if that has some thing to do with licensing. But having an additional stairway going up kind of concerns me a little bit when you're dealing with a lot of children.
It, it could be possibly that the other boards end up former fire chief sitting on it. That's, that could be possibly. And I, and I, and that's, that's my concern. I, you know, this is from experience and this is from, you know, from having to one, hump the, the hose up the, up the, the, those scuttle holes, two, directing people to do it on a faster operation. So it's, you know, it's, it's, that's why it's a passion of mine and that's why it's always a concern whenever anybody comes to this board. I, I always bring this up and it's always something that's, that I need to at least have it addressed and whether we, we actually go through with this or not, um, but it, it is a discussion that has to be put on the record. So, and then to your concern about the children going up the staircase, well, you have three other sets of staircase that you have to protect. So if you're gonna protect those doors on any floor, what difference does it make one more flight of stairs as opposed to the other six or seven they're going up and down? Yeah, you're gonna have to protect the kids on no matter what floor they're on as it is. So, uh, you know, I can re, you know, rebuke that, uh, that argument to that, to that.
We, we, we always, we are, yeah, we're, are, are, the answer to that question is we're always concerned about hiding spaces. That was quite honestly, it was one of our big conversations about the, um, about the support beams in the classrooms. Every, you know, I, any, any, any childcare centers worst fear is having a, having a child go missing. So as we all know, they like to kind of play hide and seek sometimes, so.
Yeah, I, I.
The more places you can remove for that, that better off you are.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. I, I totally share your concern when it comes to children. I get the whole thing of the public safety aspect of it, and and I get it, I just, I'm just looking at the entire picture, but not just, you know, um, one, one facet of it, that's all. So, um, that, that's my concern, Chairman. I don't know what we can do about this, and but at least we, we're having this dialogue and this conversation to see what is the best way to handle this.
Okay, um, I'm not sure, because if we, if we have a shed above it, it becomes a devariance. So the choices, I'm sorry.
Is it possible to make the opening in the roof larger?
Yeah, you probably have to have a shadow over the opening. Some type of protective device.
If you make an opening, I, I would say to this, if you could put a, the, the ladder in that staircase um, and make it a wider opening of say, a uh, you know, larger than forty-two by forty-two. Um, and it's in the, in the actual, in the staircase, not hidden in some room that, you know, that may or not be, um.
We'd have to look at that. I think if it's exposed in the stairway, the state licensing might have an issue with that, because kids would climb on it. So they would want a barrier in front of it of some sort, right?
Hey Cheryl, Cheryl, to that point, just, just thinking, um, let's take a look at Livingston, because um, that's exactly how Livingston is.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, Livingston, Livingston has the opening in the stairwell, but I believe, I believe there's no ladder. I believe the ladder um is either up high on the wall. Um, at, at, at my height, or there's not one. I have to go back and double check. But I do know for sure that the access point to the roof um in Livingston is in the back stairwell.
And that, and that's just from an operational standpoint, one, you, you, you're worried about the children, you know. People are walking through the building, and I'm talking just routine maintenance with tools, things of that nature. You're, you're, you're isolated. If you keep those doors closed, the staircase, you're isolating the kids from the people with heavy machinery or equipment or things of that nature. That, that's my, my other concern, so.
So, uh, Mrs. Smiraldo, can we say, so we move this along, that they will look at Livingston, come back with a solution presented to the building department, understanding what you have said in the application today?
Acceptable, thank you.
Outstanding. I love moving on. Okay.
Mr. Cardoza has his hand raised.
Thank you. I, I recalled my other question. Um, I believe Mr. Harrison had mentioned something about the uh heights in the rooms uh increasing and earlier, was that the other?
Yeah, so the, the, we were able to readjust the floor to floor heights because of the new build. Um, we did have a very low first floor, so here, um, our basement level to our first floor finish level is now eleven-six. Previously, again, I don't remember specifically offhand, but it was much less than that. It was closer, I think, to like nine and a half or ten. Creating that very low ceiling down there. So by readjusting all the floors and getting them to work a little bit better allowed us to open that up.
Okay, yeah, that was all. I just wanted a little more detail. Thank you so much.
Great. One other question, uh, last time we talked about the trash being relocated to the southwest corner of the building. Um, have you considered where the trash is gonna go, and will they be recycled?
It's the existing trash enclosure staying where it is.
Is that in the southwest corner of the building? Mr. Harrison, yes, so we'll say yes. Okay, good.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't wanna jump in. It is, it is.
It's the existing, yeah.
So I don't wanna.
I don't understand that. That means the existing meaning the way it was conditioned on the last resolution? So the existing traction enclosure that's now being utilized by the school will stay where it is and will continue to be used by both the existing school and the annex.
Yeah, and then just for the record, it's, it's the, say it is the southwest corner of the, the annex building.
Okay.
Correct, and if, if, if you recall, the, we had originally way, way back when um, had talked about moving that a little bit, and what we had, what had been brought up by the planning board was that um, there was a level of discomfort in the throughway being two ways um in the parking area. Um, so by leaving it where it was, we did not condense the size or the width, I should say, of that drive pattern there. And so that will remain the same as existing.
Great. Um, is, what was my question? I have a question floating around. Um. Oh, is there gonna be any striping or fire lane striping along this new building? No parking?
There, there's no striping, fire line striping proposed.
Mr. Mr. Smiraldo, do you need anything, or in this area, we don't?
Pete, you're on news.
Mrs. Smiraldo, can't hear you.
Uh, you got your wish.
No.
So, uh, the, uh, I'm looking, I just would like to see the building there. If there's, if there's any entrance way that needs to be uh, obviously, yes, and if there's any parking up against the curb, yes, it should be, it should be installed. Uh, as long as it doesn't preclude, you know, um, apparatus or emergency vehicles being able to park in front. Yeah, absolutely, it should be put in, but I, it's hard for me to see. I, I, I'm technologically challenged, and I might don't have my laptop. I'm looking at this on my phone. So, so.
So we'll, we'll leave that to the fire subcode official to take a look at this?
Please.
Okay, cool. Okay, um. Do uh, do any members of the public have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised.
Excellent, okay. Um, I, I, I'm sorry, did I miss you, Mr. Jordan and Mr. Hazel? Do you have any questions?
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hanley, I, I, I think you ready to sum up?
Yes, um, I just wanted to make sure, um, Diana, that we're okay with the traffic study. And, you know, that was submitted, the last hearing as well as the transcript.
That was part of the application. I mean, if the board, I don't think the board is asking for any.
All right. I just wanted to make sure. Um, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, um, impart predicated upon the prior testimony in the expert's report from the November hearing and the resolution approving this application, and that the only so substantive modification to the prior approval is construction of a new building with the same square footage in contrast to rebuilding the building, um, renovating it. Um, I believe it has been demonstrated by the respective testimony this evening um, that the granting of the C variances have both, um, testimony has satisfied both the positive and negative criteria. And I would respectfully request a favorable vote on this application.
Thank you, sir. So, Ms. McGovern, so we're going to adopt the uh the traffic study from the previous application. Is that correct into this application?
Uh, what, what you can do is, um, the res- the prior resolution, which was memorialized by the board, and it's less than a year ago.
Right.
And the variances run with the land that were granted, and they're the same variances that are being requested. So, so that part is covered. In terms of the traffic, the testimony, um, you didn't have any conditions in, we, we can, we can, you can, I can redo, and we can have the exact same conditions. When I look through them, there's the only conditions that have to do with traffic were already provided on their plans in terms of the signage, so.
Right.
They've all been met, but we can just say in keeping consistent with the prior resolution conditions, you do have some new conditions, though.
Right, so just for the board's edification, there are, uh, commit, can, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hanley. There are three condition, three, uh, uh, condition, I'm sorry, there are three requests for variances, but they're all pre-existing, non-conforming.
That's correct.
Okay, so to the board, that means that everything is there the way it is. They're not gonna change the footprint of the building, and we can agree with this because it's, it's existing presently. They don't have to provide any new information uh, in relation to why we should grant them, except it's been there already, and they're putting up a building with the same footprint. And it is not facing uh any community, it's not encumbering uh the zone plan, and it actually promotes the health and welfare uh of the uh children going there. How's that sound? I like that. Okay, um, so to that end, does any member of the board have any other questions or comments? One at a time, one at a time, one at a time. I'm sorry, who told that? Council President?
Uh, yes, that, just a question regarding the sidewalk. I, I believe there's a sidewalk on Prospect Avenue side uh, as well as on the Mount Pleasant Avenue side. Does that sidewalk extend to the uh, limit of the property, or does it just go to the driveway? I'm talking about the Mount Pleasant Avenue side.
Right, there, there's a mountain range under that building on uh the Mount Pleasant Avenue side. So I don't think we're gonna be able to condition that, but uh, let me ask Mr. Harrison to uh weigh in on that.
Yeah, yeah, it, uh, back when we did the original building, the first building back in twenty nineteen, that was one of the conditions that was asked of us um from, from both the board as well as um some of the members of the town. So we did, we did agree to that. We put sidewalks in um all around the perimeter. Uh, on the Prospect side, we went as far as possible, so there's actually a sidewalk there now that kind of dead ends into the mountain, the mountain face, so to speak. Um, that's on Prospect there, but there, there are um sidewalks as far as are possible based on the landscape.
You mean on Mount Pleasant Avenue side, then? Because the Prospect Avenue side is the side that's the, the, it's uh headed toward like Essex Green. Mount Pleasant Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So Pro- Prospect on the Prospect on the forward side, there are sidewalks the whole way.
And Mount Pleasant goes up to your driveway.
Mount goes past the driveway, because we, we actually, we went to, in, uh, that goes on to Route ten or, or, or onto Mount Pleasant. And then if you cross over, it continues there, and then it, it kind of dead ends right into the side of the, the mountain.
Got you. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, Mayor McCartney, you have a question?
Uh, Chairman, it was going back to when you were talking about conditions, and we talk about the conditions for this. And one in particular would be about the staircase recommendation made by uh Pete Smiraldo.
Yes. That they're going to look at the Livingston site and uh report back to the building department in concert with the uh fire subcode official in relation to Mr. Smiraldo's questions.
And the fire lanes.
And the fire lanes.
And an A, AED on each one.
And the AED.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Mr. Harrison, correct me if I'm wrong, but all teachers have to be CPR certified?
We just actually, uh, we, we just did that last week, actually, so yes, they are. And, and the certification is always continuously upgraded, or um, every new brother.
Okay, so, uh, do any of the members of the board have any question? I'm sorry. Do any of the members of the board have any questions? Okay, do any members of the public have any comment on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any comment on this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
There are no hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna close this portion of the application. So having said that, I make a motion that we approve PB twenty-four dash OAGBS LLC TA, the Goddard School Block eighty-three Lot one and five dot oh one two eighty-nine Mount Pleasant Avenue uh, with conditions, uh, and the adoption of conditions on the previous resolution plus the new conditions provided this evening. And do I have a second?
So moved.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Smiraldo, seconds. Uh, let's wait for, I, I just wanna make sure that uh Ms. McGovern is with us. Are we okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Outstanding. Okay, yeah, I'm a little on the motion.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Smiraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey? Yes. Council President Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Kevin Bago?
Mr. Harrison, it is my pleasure to say yes yet again. Thank you, great smoke and passes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you guys all for your time.
Thank you very much.
The, the, the next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, August seventh, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty via Zoom. The next planning board special meeting will be July thirtieth at six thirty PM in council chambers in person. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Garino provides the motion. I second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and he knows. The ayes are above the noes. Have a wonderful evening, ladies and gentlemen. Stay cool. Thank you so much.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.